Welcome, everybody, to the November 18, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All board members are present. Our first item on the agenda is to go to the open forum. Tonight, we have three speakers. I'm not going to read the rules. The rules are placed out there. And so I invite the first speaker up, which is Katie Gabriel, on strategic priorities and policy 606.5.
Good evening. My name is Katie Gabriel. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Savage, and I have two students in the district. We have a strategic priority that is to create positive learning environments, fostering a welcoming, inclusive, and safe learning environment for all. Books are one tool that help people feel welcome and included, as well as help us learn more about people who are different from ourselves. Better understanding others helps to build a foundation for a safer environment for all, which is why I am surprised to hear two directors asking to remove the selection criteria in policy 606.5 that encourages acquiring media materials that promote equity or an understanding of the views, triumphs, or struggles of others. There may be some things that go without saying, but the importance of equity and understanding others is not one of them. You don't have to look far for examples illustrating a continued need for all of us to seek understanding about others and how a lack of understanding can be harmful to our students, such as a flyer recently sent out endorsing a slate of candidates, including a future board director falsely accusing schools of "transing" our students without parental consent. Or the co-chair of local Moms for Liberty group emailing the board to notify them that our district is listed on the injunction for a recent case where Moms for Liberty and Young America's Foundation argued against the Biden administration's Title IX updates because they include gender identity within the protective guidelines. These examples highlight a clear need for more understanding throughout our community around transgenderism. Trans and non-binary youth exist in our schools and in our communities. Studies show they're at higher risk of self-harm and suicide attempts due to being bullied and lack of support from within their community. And those risks are significantly reduced when these youth are out and are accepted and supported by at least one adult in their life. Imagine how much safer they would feel in our schools with an entire community supporting and accepting them. We have work to do. Equity and understanding is not word salad, and we cannot assume that the importance of understanding others goes without saying. We in the community, but especially anyone who has a seat at that table, needs to seek understanding of all students, especially those from historically marginalized communities, so that you're able to act and speak with respect and in support of these students as you draft policy and make decisions. When we say we're creating a welcoming, inclusive, and safe environment for all students, we truly need to create that environment for all students. Their safety and their success depends on it. Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Gillis speaking on the library materials policy.
Good evening, Board Chair France, School Board Directors, Superintendent Thomas, Student Representative, District Leadership, and my fellow community members. My name is Michael Gillis. I'm a parent of two students in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, and I am a community member, a taxpayer, and a voter. Tonight, I'd like to comment on policy 606.5, selection of library and media materials. I wish to applaud the board and district leadership for the effort it has made to review and refine this policy, and I also wish to express recognition of the transparency demonstrated by the board and district leadership in the review and refinement process. The policy ensures that students in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools will have access to materials that are educational, interesting, and engaging. As written, the policy aligns with the district's vision, mission, priorities, and core beliefs as outlined by the strategic plan published this past summer. Children will be able to access materials that will broaden their horizons in understanding, helping them build their background knowledge and insight to enable them to grow and develop, to become thriving members of our community, and live their best lives. I am happy to see that the policy places trust in our library media specialists, paid professionals with years of experience and hours upon hours of training, often including more than one advanced degree. When my children were in elementary school here, I trusted the professional judgment of the library media specialist in their school building. As my children have progressed into district secondary schools, my trust has also extended to the professionals at those buildings. By approving this policy, the board will send a message to our library media specialists throughout the district that their professionalism is respected and appreciated, their judgment valued and trusted. Additionally, through the work of the Policy Advisory Committee, the board has demonstrated transparency, keeping stakeholders informed of the process and engaging community members in the decision-making that led to the policy being presented and voted on tonight. This policy is comprehensive and robust. It ensures learners will be able to access materials to enhance their learning and development as human beings in a democratic society, something we can all agree on. The process to review and refine the policy was likewise thorough and transparent for community stakeholders. As a community member, as a voter, as a taxpayer, but most importantly, as a parent, I am satisfied. I urge the board to approve this policy tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin Andras-- I can't read your writing, so I apologize. Andresek, congratulations to new members and the referendum.
Good evening. Kevin Androck, no one ever gets it right, so that's fine. Appreciate all of you and all the work you do. Selfless work that doesn't get appreciated. Michael Thomas, Ph.D., appreciate you as well, community. I'm here to congratulate the two new board members that are going to be coming on that just got recently elected. I think it's fantastic that we're going to actually have some, hopefully, some accountability to reading, writing, and arithmetic, and really focused on the actual reason kids go to school is to learn. Instead of all of the focus being on a hug here and a hug there, we can teach kids reading, writing, and arithmetic even if we can make them also be respectful. So I would hope that with coming back, board member, maybe I wasn't here when you were there, and we can see that. Just as a note, I've got a graduate from a college with a degree in biology with a minor in finance and chemistry. I've also got an academic All-American at Hillsdale College, sophomore. She actually graduated number one in her class here in 2023. But this board doesn't allow for the recognition of a valedictorian, which I think is ridiculous. We should be celebrating the excellence of all the kids and everything that they do. So I hope that the other board member that got re-elected actually re-centers themselves, and really, you guys focus on the kids and the kids' academics, arithmetic, reading, and writing. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to ask the board for a motion and a second and an approval of the agenda. So made. By Director Olstad. And a second?
Second.
Second by Director White. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes seven, zero. Next, on the agenda, we have the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda items that are routine in nature and enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a Consent Agenda item and addressed. The Consent Agenda includes financials, which includes the check and wire transfer dispersment summaries and details, the bank reconciliation statement, the PMA financial, monthly wire detail, monthly health and dental wire detail, monthly check detail, and monthly ACH detail, purchase orders above $25,000, the monthly financial report, the enrollment report, the approval of school board minutes, and personnel items, which consist of candidates for employment, retirements, resignations, terminations, non-renewals, and leaves of absence. It also includes the 2024-25 organizational chart and the Assurance of Compliance Report. So I'd like a motion and a second. By Director Burnick. In a second. Sorry, Director Crosby. Okay.
Chair France, I'd like to pull 7C, the monthly financial report, for further discussion.
Okay. That will be moved to the first of new business. Okay, so I need an amended motion for the Consent Agenda for all items except for 7C. So made. By Director Atkinson. Second by Burnick. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes seven, zero. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the Resolution of Acceptance of Gifts. And tonight, we have three gifts. A $1,000 gift for the Community Ed Halloween Party from the Prior Lake Lions Club, a $500 gift for the Community Ed Halloween Party by the Prior Lake VFW, and then MinCap's Wishlist Donor List, who donated supplies by Shutrup, Petchell, Ferroseth, Niosi, Erickson, Parker, Jamison, Floric, Rook, Builders Group, Lyman Lumber, and the Mayo Clinic. This is a-- I need a motion and a second first. By Director Bullion. Second. Who was that? Burnick. Okay, by Director Burnick, a second. This is a roll call vote. We'll start with Director Olstad.
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Atkinson?
Aye.
An aye, so that passes seven, zero. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the Laker Pride Special Recognition and Laker Showcase, and I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair France, Board Directors. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about our tutoring program, our peer tutoring program that we have started through our Achievement and Integration Grant. For the 2425 school year, we've introduced this tutoring program where students get support from their peers. These students take time out of their day to tutor fellow high school students during Laker time, and if they have open hours, they also go work with middle school students during their advisory hours and after-school homework help. Students apply for the job and are selected based on their academic success and their willingness to help others. And these students find a lot of value in supporting other students to succeed, representing the strong spirit of Laker pride. And tonight, I'm going to have Director Oak come forward, and we will talk a little bit more about the program. As well, Director Oak, we have some certificates that I'll allow you to distribute afterwards.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, and I can go in a little bit more about the program when I do the presentation of the Achievement and Integration Grant, but I would just add to that these students are not only a resource for academic support to their peers, but they're also a mentor as well. They selflessly, selflessly give up their one-hour additional sleep time during Laker time or a peaceful lunch at high school to go off and help tutor the middle school kids there during their advisory time. And sometimes, for those who are able to go after school, they also take part in supporting the middle school kids there as well, too. So while further ado, I'll start with the back row here, and I'll start with Jasmine DeHedway. You guys, you can come up here, and I will pass out the certificate once everybody is up here. I forgot. Let me find your certificate here. With that, the Haiti Delgado, you can come up here. Arena Dushin, there you go. Why did you come up here and just stand up in the front? Yo. Joe Showmeyer. Ben Sandoval. Hayden. And Duwin Munoz, Devin Munoz, Abby, and Vika. Let's move back a little bit here. You guys can form two rows, too, if you want.
I'm going to get your picture taken.
And then we also have Artemi and Tyler, Artemi Kreschkov and Tyler Andrew, who couldn't make it as well tonight. But these students are selected based on their academic standings there, and really their willingness to help their peers is also-- we have limited time for tutoring, so they come and they talk to me. On top of the available structures that we have, they also carve out additional times, too, to be able to help their peers. Their whole goal is to help their peers succeed and achieve their goals in education. So it is definitely something that represents the spirit of Laker pride, so I would ask all of you to give them a hand.
Okay, next on our agenda is personnel items, and I'm going to hand this over to Director Herman.
Chair France, my apologies, my computer froze. Chair France, members of the board, the first additional staffing request is for additional kids co-staffing that comes out of the '04 fund to support the increase in enrollment in that program.
Okay, I need a motion and a second. So made. By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Director Crosby. Are there any questions for Director Herman? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes seven, zero. The next item is the Staffing Restructure. And Director Herman?
Chair France, members of the board, tonight, we're bringing forward a staffing restructure request to the board to convert a 1.0 health aide to a .6 licensed school nurse at the Edgewood Programming. In the early childhood programming, we are seeing that we have a reduction in health office visits that would typically be serviced by a health aide position, but a significant increase in student needs that require a licensed school nurse. So with some recent moves in those, in some retirements or resignations, we were able to have an opening in a 1.0 health aide that we are asking to convert to a .6 licensed school nurse. That differential in cost, about $30,000, will be covered by the '02 fund, or sorry, the '04 fund. The additional $4,500 is anticipated to be covered by billable services through third-party billing because the licensed school nurse, some of those services can be charged back through that.
Okay, I need a motion and a second. By Director Burnick.
Second.
Second by Director Olstad. Are there any questions for Director Herman? I just have one question. It looks like it's a zero sum, basically, to the fund one, based on what you just said.
Chair France, members of the board, that is what we anticipate.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes seven, zero. And the next one is Item C, Additional Staffing for 2425 CNS.
Chair France, members of the board, out of the '02 Food Services Funds, we are seeing our staffing levels return to pre-COVID numbers and needs for additional services, especially with the congestion from moving from six-period day down to three-period day. So we're asking to increase the hours by 4.75 per day. The entire cost would come from the '02 Food Services Fund, so there'd be no impact to the general fund.
I need a motion and a second. By Director White.
Second.
Second by Director Olstad. Are there any questions for Director Herman? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes seven, zero. Next item is the Memorandum for Understanding for the MOU for the campus supervisors. Director Herman?
Chair France, members of the board, as part of a petitioning process through the Bureau of Mediation and Services, the campus supervisors have petitioned, and it has passed through the Bureau of Mediation and Services for them to be included in the bargaining unit for Minnesota School Employees Association. So with that, we negotiated with that union to determine which level, lane, and benefits they would be eligible for, and that is what is covered in the MOU.
I need a motion and a second. By Director Atkinson and Director Crosby. Okay. Any questions for Director Herman? I believe the amounts in the MOU were already discussed, so I have no questions either. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes seven, zero. Next, we have the Agreements and Terms and Conditions, basically the contract for the 2426 term, and I'm going to hand this over to Director Herman.
Chair France, members of the board, in continuing to work through all of our contracts for 2426, we're bringing forward five of our contracts. These are all of our contracts of casual seasonal positions, so that their main increase is in their salaries. All of these settlements are within the board parameters that were set.
Okay, I need a motion and a second. By Director Bullion. Director by Burnick. Director Burnick. Any questions for Director Herman on the contract? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes seven, zero. And the last one is the Additional Staffing for the Co-Curricular Coach that is funded by the Booster Club. Director Herman?
Chair France, members of the board, tonight, we're asking for an increase of 1.0 stipend for the dance coach positions. We have agreement from the Booster Club to fund that fully. That is based off of increase in participation, as you can see in the MOU, or sorry, the memo has increased from 27 all the way up to 62 in the last four years. So looking for your approval of this MOU with the Booster Fund-funded positions.
Can you do a motion and a second?
Made.
By Director Olstad.
Second.
Second by White. Director White. Any questions for Director Herman? I just had one question, and that's, we are transitioning the middle school to be part of a district-run program, and before, it was a private program that was run through the school. Is that a correct statement?
Chair France, I believe that occurred two years ago. So with that move over, that is why you're seeing a jump in participation, is because it used to be part of an LLC, and it has since been run by the district.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven, zero. Okay, we have no unfinished business, and for new business, we're going to jump immediately to the item that was taken off of the Consent Agenda, which is 7C.
Yes, thank you. So pulling out the monthly financial report, particularly page three, with the results of the levy vote, I was wondering if Director Frederickson could give our community an overview of our monthly financial and year-to-date financial highlights, including our revenue and expenses and our current status of our fund balance. I think it'd be very helpful for the community to hear where we're at from a financial standpoint.
So to clarify, you want additional information than what's in the financial statement?
No, I think it just, I think that it'd be helpful for the community to hear where we're at, as far as, like, you know, our fund balance is at 18%. Or, you know, to just walk through this statement of where we're at, there was a lot of fear coming out of the levy I've heard from parents and community members of what's going to happen if the levy fails, and will I be able to send my kid to school tomorrow? Will the lights still be on? And so I think, from my perspective, looking at our financial statement here, it gives me really, a really good feeling of where we're at financially, and I think that would be a positive thing to share with our community as far as where we're at with revenue expenditures and our fund balance.
So to be clear, when we present these financial reports every month, we've always made sure that everybody understood this is a point in time. So this is as of the end of September. It hasn't really had a lot of, some of the contracts that we've paid, it hasn't had some of the contracts that, or their employment contracts that have been approved. So there's a lot of things that's not in this financial statement yet, because, again, it's just through the end of September. The percent of the fund balance varies throughout the year. It'll look different in October because we don't get the property tax payments. We always skip the state aid in the month of October because it's property tax collection, so it'll look different in October. I don't think that they're spent any different than the five-year forecast that I gave last month. We are still going to be using the fund balance that was approved by this board. We're trying to save money where we can. But I think just from this financial board or this packet, you're not seeing the whole picture yet. So there are many things. We have some transportation issues. We're looking at enrollment increases there. So there's just, it's very early in the year to just look at a September financial statement and be able to predict what's going to happen for the rest of the year. But the fund balances, it does look high, but again, we, it's at a point in time, and it'll kind of even itself out throughout the year.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I am going to ask for a motion and a second to improve Item 7C on the Consent Agenda.
So made.
By Director Crosby.
Second.
Second by Director White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes seven, zero. Next, under New Business, we have the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Presentation. I think they call it CACR, which is the new version of World's Best Workforce. So I hand this over to Directors and Bush?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair France, members of the board. Tonight, we are giving the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness and Achievement and Integration Report. I don't know what the, what did you say, CACR? Yeah, it's pretty much the same requirements as World's Best Workforce. At this point, there could be changes down the line, but at this time, it's basically the same presentation that we've given before. Just to orient you, we are talking about data from last school year, so it's a very, very late, like, report that provides information much past the end of last year. The reporting deadline is-- The reporting deadline is around this time of year, just because some data points do take a little while to come in. A lot of this stuff you will have seen in other packages before, as we've presented other data, but this is just organized in the kind of requirement, the different categories as laid out by CACR. Okay, first, I want to apologize, there was an error on this slide in the packet. It's since been updated in your board packet. I apologize for that. This is just basic demographics that show that the percentage of students, the way, their race and ethnicity in our district compared to the state. So here, you can see that our percentage of students of color is lower than that at the state level. This also compares other demographics, so our free reduced meal lunch rate is about nineteen percent, as compared to the state at forty-three percent. We have slightly lower special education rates and lower English learner rates than the state at large. The CACR, or World's Best Workforce, goals are summarized in these five major categories. The first is all children are ready for school. I know we've talked about this one before. It's a little bit tricky for us to report on that, since we have very limited sway and impact over the readiness, but we do report on that per requirement. The third grade reading level is one that's been around for a long time and still is important with the READ Act to look at that. The third is about racial and economic achievement gaps, so we'll talk about a few data points that have been disaggregated for this purpose, ready for college and career, and then graduation. School readiness, we're measuring by our incoming fall FASBRIDGE data of kindergarten students. Here, you can see that overall, the rates coming from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four may have gone up a little bit, but have remained fairly steady. So despite, you know, the pandemic and things like that, we're looking at some pretty high, especially in the last couple of years, some high rates of kindergarten readiness of students academically coming into our system. The way that these slides work is, I have laid out what last year's goal is, whether we met the goal or not, and then articulating the new goal. Typically, the new goal is just the same percentage increase as the previous goal. So here, the goal would be to increase the percentage of students scoring the low-risk category on FASBRIDGE, early reading, increasing from seventy-four to seventy-six. That did not happen, so then the goal would be adjusted down from seventy-one to seventy-four for next year. And again, pretty limited impact over this, but maybe more in the future as early childhood, voluntary pre-K gets a little bit more popular. We'll see. For third grade reading level, our goal here is to increase our third grade reading level. That's the grade level that shows in research that is a key marker for whether you're going to be really successful long-term. Obviously, if you're not, we can still do things to help students, but that's really kind of the research-based grade level to really target for on-track reading. Last year's goal was to increase from fifty-nine to sixty-one. That goal was met, it was sixty-five percent of students. So then, in the future, our goal would be to increase that. With all of our READ Act training coming up, we're definitely hopeful that this is going, and have, you know, are starting to work through tangible strategies to get this to continue to go up. In terms of equity, we are looking at our Black African-American students and our Latino and Hispanic Latino students. These are the two subgroups that we're watching in particular because of the size in our district. There are some subgroups in our district that do not have a big enough size to really track at this level, and these are the two groups that are historically more underperforming than we would want them to be from a systems level. So here, you can see that we, there was a big increase in Black African-American third-grade reading proficiency and a slight decline in Hispanic Latino. So here, our Hispanic Latino goal was not met, and the Black African-American goal was met with that big increase. The goal was to get to thirty-five, and it was at fifty. So this just kind of helps us work on specific strategies that we may need to cater to different groups. These are our average ACT composite scores. The overall composite scores and then the state have been fairly steady. You can see here that the state went down point one, and then our district went up point one, so very steady in terms of the composite scores. Here, that's disaggregated by race, ethnicity groups. This is just important to make sure that all of our groups are getting what they need in terms of academic support at the high school. So our goal was to increase those same two groups, Hispanic Latino, Black African-American. With the Hispanic Latino, the goal was met. It went from, it went to nineteen point two, and the goal there was eighteen, so that one was surpassed, and the Black African-American did not meet the goal of increasing the one point that we were hoping it, or anticipating it would. This is the percentage of students enrolling in college in the fall. Our line, our line is that blue line there. It's a bit squigglier than the state line. Part of that is because our sample size is low, you're just naturally going to get more fluctuation and not as smooth of a line, but overall, the trajectory really holds strong to what the state is showing. Here, you can also see on the right-hand side, the percentage of students that go to post-secondary within the state of Minnesota and then outside the state of Minnesota. Also, we're finding, especially with the pandemic, that students, just because they don't go in the fall doesn't mean they don't go, it just means that they may have a different path for acquiring post-secondary experience. But this is the percentage of students of our class of twenty-twenty-one enrolling in college in the following fall. Here is just a representation of our class of twenty-twenty-four and the states in which they attended the fall, this fall, so you can see that they're spread across a lot of our country there. Developmental education is a metric that's used to determine whether students are really ready for a career in college. There's a lot of metrics to be used. This metric indicates whether a student needs to take courses that are non-credit-bearing courses, or non-credit-bearing courses in college. It's kind of the old term of remedial courses in college. We want to decrease this as much as possible, because that's requiring students to pay for credits that don't then accumulate towards a degree. So we're seeing a little bit of, well, our rates went down both statewide and Prior Lake Savage area schools, from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two. I think keeping an eye on that and making sure it's continuing to go down is an important metric to watch. And then rigorous course enrollment, this shows the percentage of students that are enrolled in rigorous courses. IB is a program that we don't have here at this, in Prior Lake Savage area schools, and it's not a very common program within our state, so there you can see there's just a small percentage of students statewide enrolled in IB. Based on some of the other presentations that we've provided, we know that we have a lot of students enrolled in advanced placement courses, that AP, and you can see, as compared to the state, we have a much higher percentage of students enrolling in AP courses. On the left-hand side, we have concurrent enrollment, which is also higher than the state average, and then our PSCO enrollment is lower than the state average. This really has to do with which programs we offer and which ones we promote, and then within those, the percentage of students that are participating. So really, our focus has been concurrent and AP here. We've heard this before, but just another point, eighty percent of our Prior Lake student, high school students taking AP courses receive a score of three or higher, and that gives them college credit. So that is something that's really important, that a student can start to acquire those credits while they're still in high school and save on cost and time. Here's our four-year graduation rate as a district. You can see that for Prior Lake Savage area schools, we went up from ninety-four to ninety-five. The red is Prior Lake High School stayed steady at ninety-seven, so that one percent increase as a district would be attributed mostly to our Bridges program and its increase in graduation we've seen there. This is our graduation rate by subgroup. You can see that a lot of these subgroups are really in that upward trajectory, showing that we're, we're showing some increases. That also could be related to the increase in graduation rate from Bridges, because that population at large is more students of color and more diverse than our high school. So I think there's a relationship there, that some of these rates going up are not, there's no causation, but there's a correlation there between our increase in students of color graduation rate, Bridges, and the work that's being done there. The state goal is that at least eighty-five percent of students in every race and ethnicity group graduate within four years, so our goal always remains eighty-five percent or above. For both our Hispanic Latino and our Black African-American subpopulations, we met those goals at ninety-one and ninety percent. So the goal's moving forward is just keep that as eighty-five or above, and that's really looking at the statewide data and what they're looking for within each subpopulation. And then I will pass it along to Sam, or Director Oak, sorry.
So last year was the first year of our Achievement and Integration Grant. It's a new plan that we've written, presented two years ago, which our first full year of implementation was last year. And just a reminder, the reason why we get the Achievement and Integration Grant is because we are an adjoining district to a racially isolated district. We first got the grant through being adjoining to the Shakopee School District, who has significantly higher students of color population than we did. At that time, when we first originally got the Achievement and Integration Grant, we were only at fourteen thousand dollars about, roughly, that we were leveraging. Now we're at a little over nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and that's due to the increase in students of color in our district here. With that being adjoining to Shakopee, we also work with Jordan, and last year, Lakeville reached out to partner with us as well, because they became a racially isolated district also. So these are the six goals that we wrote for the Achievement and Integration Grant. I'm not going to read through all of them, but I'll explain. The first goal is our collaborative goal with our other partner districts, and that's through doing the work with our caring and committed conversations. The work of caring and committed conversations in Prior Lake here, we do at all K-12 schools. Our dean of students, who is also paid out of the Achievement and Integration Grant, leads that work at the building level. And then, for our high school students, we meet twice a year with Shakopee and Jordan, and now also Lakeville, to do a combined caring and committed conversation with them as well. For our elementary school and middle school, once a year, we come together with all schools. The site decides, but it's usually their fourth and fifth grade students that they bring out to take part in the caring and committed conversations. And then our goal is set there, and there was a survey that was decided by all school districts to pass out at the end of the year to record the results from that, and I'll go into that a little bit further later on. The second goal that we have there is to increase the attendance rate of our Native American students. In the first, in the past Achievement and Integration Grant, when I first came into the district here, we were looking at unexcused absences in our Native American population from an average of six unexcused absence. At that time, our goal was set at three unexcused absence. Last year, we reported that we significantly passed that goal. We were down to like, really point something in terms of average unexcused absence there for our Native American students. So we decided to look at full-day attendance rate this year here, going from seventy-two percent to eighty percent of full-day attendance. And the third goal is talking about increasing graduation rate for our Black students and our Hispanic students, which Dr. Zumbush have mentioned. Those are historically our populations that have underperformed at a systems level here. Number four, to maintain proportionality in our AP classes, and also increase opportunities for our at-risk students to take part in MINTCAPS. And goal number five, we looked at ensuring that all our teachers have access to, and training to culturally relevant and linguistically responsive pedagogy. And then goal number six is to increase engagement there and understanding for our top five parent groups, language groups outside of English, which are Russian-speaking parents, Spanish-speaking parents, Somali-speaking parents, and Vietnamese speaking parents, and Khmer, which is Cambodian-speaking parents there. So doing activities to engage that population and bringing parent groups out for meetings and trainings around some of our system pieces, systems pieces here. So yeah, like I said, these are some of the work that we're doing, and I always say that equity work is work we do together, so it's really not just my department alone, but in terms of what's in my department here, we have myself as the Equity and Inclusion Director, our language liaisons, as well in our Russian, Spanish, and Somali-speaking languages, along with our native program coordinator and liaison also doing that work there. And I also oversee the homeless intervention program, the Homeless Bikini Vento, which I work very closely with the social workers there to help coordinate and provide support to our students who are experiencing housing instability and homelessness. You've seen today that we honored and recognized our student tutors. This is a new program that we started this year here, and tutoring is just one piece of it. There is a mentorship program that goes with it as well. The tutors that we honor today provide tutoring support during Laker time, and then after school and advisory time at the middle school there. If the students don't have homework to support, for instance, when they're working with our ESL students, our English as a Second Language learner, in the D-Pod there, the students would have conversation topics with them around cultural differences, holidays, and things that they celebrate there, and that goal is to increase the conversational English skills of our English language learners. So there's a lot of support that our students do. We'll be also opening a credit recovery during winter break here as well at the high school, and in the future, we hope to open some support at the middle school as well too during winter break and spring break time for students who want to catch up on work, whether it's credits at the high school there or need additional support in any subject area at the middle school. And I talked a little bit about the language-specific engagement. We found out that our one, you know, our mode of communication doesn't always reach all families, so we do a lot in terms of bringing families in. I know some directors have sat in some of those meetings as well in helping us do trainings in utilizing Infinite Campus, checking on their students' scores, attendance even sometimes. The students get really nervous when we talk to, you know, to them, saying that we're bringing their parents in to help support them in doing this work here. But as a result of all the work that we're doing, we feel like we're performing extremely well. We also always say in our department here that our goal is to remove barriers so that our schools and our buildings can do the work of closing the achievement and opportunity gaps there. In terms of our caring and committed conversation, we've reached our goal, and this is a baseline year for us here. We set the target of eighty percent of students would report that they are self-confident and have stronger SEL skills, and their voice is being elevated, and they're feeling more connected to schools. I would have to say, though, that our sample size was very, very small. We sent out the survey at the end of the year, and we got very few responses back, but the responses that did report back were all reporting that they have gained those confidence in those areas there. Average full-day attendance, we've been doing great with our Native American population there. We went from seventy-two point four percent there in twenty-twenty-three to ninety-two point three percent here this past year, so that's a huge increase, and this is reported through our Edutclimber poll here. The four-year graduation rate, as Dr. Zumbush has reported there, we're at ninety percent for our Black student population and ninety-one percent for our Hispanic student population, which beats out our target of eighty-six percent by twenty-twenty-six. In AP classes, we took the number of students who attended MINTCAPS last year. In AP classes, we took the number of students who attended MINTCAPS last year, and then we wrote the grant saying just a general at-risk population because at that time, the old grant wrote of targeting our students who are on free and reduced price lunch. And at that time, when we wrote the grant, we didn't know what was going to happen with the lunch costs and things like that. But even if we just look at our students who are on free and reduced price lunch right now, we are at ten percent of our MINTCAPS population who are on students, free and reduced price lunch. If we add other categories like English language learners, special ed, we are actually closer to fourteen percent of our students that are at MINTCAPS who have those categories. And we reached our goal in terms of maintaining proportionality in our AP courses as well. Eighteen percent are BIPOC students in the class of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. We had eighteen percent of our students there who are BIPOC students, and sixteen percent of BIPOC students took AP courses that year there. So we're around that target there as well. We have access and training for culturally relevant and linguistically responsive teaching practices there. Our students, our teachers in the past have went through CIA training with Dr. Sharaki Hawley. And we also have a Pelsby Grant that allows for teachers to mentor new teachers coming in and doing more work on there. We also provide a lot of training in terms of the Equity Summit and during January twentieth, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebration, who offer PD there as well too that focuses on equity and inclusion also. In terms of our parent group there and reaching the target of eighty percent, we are in progress there. There is a lot of different numbers that we are looking at there. For our Russian families, we have one hundred and thirteen households, and now we've only been able to engage sixteen households there in terms of having them come out and provide that training. For our Spanish households, we have one hundred and fifty-one households, and we've worked with thirty-nine households there. The groups are getting bigger, but there's a lot of returning parents that are coming in to make the group bigger. Our last parent meeting, we actually filled up this whole room here for our Spanish speakers there. For our Somali speakers, we're at a hundred and nineteen households, and we've worked with twenty-seven households there. And to clarify, these are households who are reporting Russian, Spanish, Somali, Cambodian, or Vietnamese as their primary language, their first language. There are going to be many others that are from the community as well to that have maybe reported English as their first language and these other languages as their secondary language. So for Somali households, we have a hundred and nineteen households, and we've been working with twenty-seven families so far. Our Cambodian household, we are at forty-six households, and we've worked with thirty-two households so far. In our Vietnamese language, we are at sixty-two households, and so far we've connected with four. So there's a lot of work that we still have to do in that community there. Some of the work on top of the parent engagement pieces that we do is we work with community ed through classes and sessions to help engage parents. I run a community ed course where I work with students and parents and engaging them together on working through their native language of sustaining Cambodian language and culture. But that was a way for me to help kind of do some training for parents that this is how you can support your students in school, where these are the questions that you can ask when they're reading a text. And our Spanish families are hoping to do a class as well too for their Spanish speakers to help continue the training in some of our systems, Infinite Campus, and everything else. School G for our secondary families, how to register for courses when registration comes up around here in February as well. So that's my report. Dr. Zumbush and I will be able to take some questions.
Okay, thank you very, very much for those comprehensive presentations. I'm going to open up to the board to ask questions.
I have a question. With all the different EL families, you just shared with how many households are in each group and how many that you've been able to reach and are working, have been able to work with? I'm just curious, what is the process to growing in those connections? What does that look like for you?
Yeah, you know, our liaisons are key for sure, but what we've been talking as a team here as well too is we don't want to work in isolation and just invite them to our district officer and have meetings on these specific topics. We really want to be able to engage the school as well too and helping them, whether they're coming here with us to be part of these meetings and therefore being able to provide a more direct connection when they go back to the school there. In our Somali parent group, we talked about our parents wanting to volunteer at the school, Glendale in particular. So this is an opportunity here that maybe if we provide that engagement piece for them, we can increase that engagement. Because a lot of times, we do a lot of meetings, they come here, they sit, and then we tell them that this is some of the things that we need to do. It usually go only so far, but if we can make that long-term connection where we can do some work together, usually that's what becomes more sustaining. So definitely involving the buildings more, whether it's our liaisons going into the building there and taking part in our Wolf Ridge conversations or anything else like that. We had Deena attend Wolf Ridge with the kids, and she was able to clarify some of the misunderstanding for Russian families to be able to take part in that. So those type of work are the areas that we're going now that we build a solid group of confidence in some of our families here, hoping to expand on that with the help of the building staff.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say like thank you to Mr. Oak for everything that you're doing. Obviously, I like been in these conversations, I see what you're doing firsthand, and I can one hundred percent like guarantee you that there is so much positive impact, even if students aren't involved like directly with the events or the conversations that you're having, just like knowing that they are happening and knowing that they can get the attention or the help they need is like really helpful. And it really helps the culture of Prior Lake High School too, even if students aren't needing that help directly, just like the students that are getting informed about these issues and getting informed about the change that is happening, I think is really helping the culture and community. So thank you.
All right, thank you so much for that feedback, and I completely agree. And if all of you have the opportunity to attend some of our student events, then I would highly encourage it, and definitely my invite will go there as well too for you to take part. I know some of you have taken part in the past, but you know, for me, listening to our students and the way they articulate their hopes and their fears have been so, so fascinating and rewarding. I've often said I've worked in three, two other districts in the past here, and this is my third district, and what our students are able to do and the things that they're able to say and articulate and plan for their schools and for their community is nothing short of amazing. So we are definitely, some districts say that in aspiration that they're working with the futures or the leaders of the future. I strongly believe that our kids here in Prior Lake will lead the future.
Just out of curiosity, regarding the American Indian attendance increase, about how many students are we talking about?
Eighty-eight, right? Wasn't that the number? Eighty-eight, I'm sure, certain yes.
That was a pretty significant increase. What was, what would you say drove that? I mean, I mean.
I do think it's the engagement. For one, it's in the past few years here, working with our parents, understand, making the connection that they have, they're able to communicate with staff to call in when their kids are absent and being, making sure they keep that line of communication going was important. But we have a lot of activities now in our native program, and I think that increases the engagement of our parents and our students too. We have drum and dance, regalia-making classes. We have our coordinator and our liaisons working with student groups. And now we've gone into the direction of providing even more direct student support, as you can see with our tutors here. Our native liaison is also going into classrooms in the elementary level to help students with their work in the classroom as well too. And I truly believe that that's definitely at least part of what's increasing the attendance there.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to add, you know, I attended one of the evenings, the Somali family evening. It was, it was really insightful for me. And the one thing I wanted to just clarify is of the groups that you mentioned, the five linguistic minority groups, they're not all EL, and that was, is that correct? I mean, like, I know we have a lot of Russian families in our district that speak English.
The students are not all EL. The parents are all second language learners, and they're all, you know, along different lines here of their English abilities, yes.
Right, and just, you know, I was just again surprised how many of the parents, even though they understood English as their second language maybe, just how helpful it was for having them navigate, like, this is what school G means, this is the difference between Infinite Campus. And so I think it was really helpful, and I love to hear about getting these parents volunteering in the schools. I think that's incredible, so thank you.
Thank you, yes, definitely a great point, Director Atkinson. Beyond the language barrier, there are other things too, like the technology gap, the cultural barriers, and even just getting acquainted to our systems as well too. You know, sometimes in the work that we do, we try to engage parents, but you know, we got to remember too that when our parents are coming into our PTC meeting and everything else, they're coming into a community that's already established already, and personal feelings from the parents coming in, it's easy for them to feel like outsiders. So being able to kind of scaffold those pieces there will help the parents be more involved with the schoolwork of their kids and our schools in the future.
Anybody else?
I had a quick question for Dr. Zumbush if I could. Thank you, Sam, Director Oak. The percentage of PLSAS class of twenty-twenty-one enrolling in college, those slides that you got to, and I know your source was SLEDS. Why do we not have data? I mean, that was three years ago. Do you know why that the data isn't more up to date?
Off the top of my head, I believe it has to do with the lag in getting, so basically it takes a whole year to determine whether a student has shown up somewhere, and this is particular to the fall, but they do it all at once. And then there's certain like in-state and out-of-state systems that have a hard time. I can't, I don't, off the top of my head, don't have all the details on that, but it does take that much time to then feed back. The SLED stands for the State Longitudinal Education Data System, and it connects both K-12 education, Office of Higher Ed, career, like career workforce data. So it's just a large multi-systems database that takes a long time to recheck with everything. So that's the best I can give off the top of my head, but.
That's fine. A lot of cooks in the kitchen that don't talk to each other in a good amount of time.
Yep, a lot of different state organizations trying to all talk and get back to us on the reporting, yeah.
Thank you for that. And then I had the next slide you had where you, you had PLSAS and PLHS. Pardon me if I missed it. What was the difference? One includes Bridges and one doesn't?
Right, one of them is Prior Lake High School and one is Prior Lake Savage Area Schools overall. The reason we typically report both is just to show that, you know, in a larger system, you would probably report out by school. Here, we're reporting out by a singular school with the high school, but just knowing that any discrepancy you see between the high school and our district overall would be Bridges and then a very small number of online students. There's just not typically enough Bridges students to report consistent trends on that. Thank you.
Any other question? Yes, please.
I have a question, Dr. Zumbush, similar to what I asked Sam. In the slide with the third grade reading, I'm sorry, not third grade reading, the the Black Hispanic third grade reading level, about, again, how many students are we talking about? Do you have a ballpark?
We have. Is it like around seven hundred students per grade level-ish? And then our Hispanic is six percent, so. Yeah, in the thirties. I can, I can easily pull those if you want the specific numbers, but yeah.
And then just when you are setting the goals for like, for next year, you see like, you want to get from sixty-five to sixty-seven. I don't know how you, the group decides on those percentages. Just me and Mike just be me. I would, and I know it's kind of, it's hard to come, sometimes come to the board with a goal that you had previous year and then come up a little bit short. For me, I'd rather have, see you shoot for a higher increase and come up short than a two percent increase and come back and say we did it.
Yeah.
And so just give me the rationale as to.
Yeah, I think based on guidance with goal setting in this and other areas, when I set this up a couple of years ago, and my predecessor may have done it slightly differently, I looked at three-year averages and really what is, it's somewhat arbitrary in the sense that it's a little bit, there's no, there's no real hard science to it, but I did look at, you know, long-term, three-year averages to see what was, you know, a reasonable increase. So I mean, yeah, I think the goal setting is generally just like what is, like if we've never seen a seven percentage point increase, I don't think it's reasonable to set a goal at seven percentage point increase. So it's kind of a combination of what's aspirational and what's realistic given the movement of the data over time. But I don't think there's anything holding us to these. We can, we can certainly go more aspirational. I don't know that the state, I mean, the requirement for the state is to report it, it's not to meet a certain percentage of your goals. And then just like my, from me personally, world's best work, it's a little bit of a, you're reporting on goals without the state providing the infrastructure to help you reach those goals. So that's kind of my, my offline take on world's best workforce in general. So it's a little bit setting goals in an area that we don't necessarily have the infrastructure to improve. I do think that we've built a lot of those, and we have a lot of those here, but not inherently due to the world's best workforce initiative. But I'm open to goal setting in a different way.
Director White, I'll just add, so you, Dr. Zumbush actually gave some context I was going to share, so I won't repeat that. But the other aspect at the school level too is that you'll see that our schools will have both, you know, we'll have our actual goals and aspirational goals based upon that stretch of our, of our students. So you'll see a hybrid of that more so at our SIP level versus the world's best workforce level.
I just, with clarification of the change of world's best workforce and then also the legislative change, did the legislators, they took something out about third grade reading, correct? So like being ready by third grade, and now I think says something about you have to be ready by, it's very general. Can you elaborate on that?
They broadened.
They broadened it, yeah.
Sorry, they did broaden that, Director Atkinson. And I don't think we've seen the complete ending of this bill yet to see where this will evolve. They're a bit in this holding pattern, but yes, they got broadened to not just focus on third, they're looking at the continuum through twelfth grade.
Right, so how does that impact your goals though, you know?
Because we don't have any updated guidance on what CACR is going to be long-term. We, it doesn't at this point. I think that if we get clear guidance on what we should be doing with that moving forward, we could revisit, or we should revisit the goals and reset based on those. At this time though, we're still pending anything solid in a new format. We're still kind of sitting in the old format until that gets updated, yeah.
That makes sense. And then I would just say with, with all the emphasis on the READ Act and the resources and the training, and then also on our new strategic plan focused on academic excellence, it might be worth it for you to go back and reevaluate your goals and, and just see where, you know, if we can shoot higher for higher.
Yeah, and again, again, these are specific to this reporting requirement. These are not our district goals. These are world's best workforce specific goals. We have much higher and more specific academic goals in all areas. This is just reporting in these particular areas. So as we're building out the scorecard for a strategic plan, you'll see a lot of goals in that that are not reflected in world's best workforce.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, I had a couple of questions. One, obviously, we don't have a lot of control with the kindergarten reading levels, but I do want to know if you've ever disaggregated the data to show of the, of the kids being tested, how many of them and what their score is that went through preschool or pre-K?
Yeah, I have not. Thank you for the question, Director Franz. I have not had a chance to do that for this year, but the last two years, I have flagged in our system students who are Circle of Friends students, which have attended our pre-K program, and tracked them over time in their first couple of years. In general, that population is a little more diverse than our average kindergarten population, and they do slightly better academically. So historically, we have looked at that. It's not astronomical, but just a slight... We do look at that on a regular basis as kind of an indicator of of the kindergarten readiness that we control. How are we doing? The pre-K early childhood program is doing a lot, also a lot with the READ Act. So I think the focus on early literacy skills, they're going through the preschool or the pre-K letters training. So we will have a lot more, you know, specific, I think, to Director Atkinson's point. When we're looking at reading, we can really have that pre-K 12 continuum as we build out those pieces. But yes, we do track to see how those students are doing as they enter our system.
Okay, because I know there's been an emphasis on trying to fund the preschool, pre-K. And potentially, if the state had the numbers, that would help. I don't know if they ask for them or if we can offer them.
I've never been asked for them, but I can definitely provide them to... I don't know who to provide them to, though.
Well, it would be nice if they asked for them. And then the other question that I had, I had a couple of other questions. One had to do with the percentages. That was already asked. But I know that from other presentations where we hear about the goal setting made by the individual teachers at each grade, as well as by the different buildings themselves, they are a little bit different. They're much more specific to the academic level and to the class level. I was just wondering, is that taken into account at all with the percentage increase from whatever we're calling this thing, CACR or World's Best Workforce?
It hasn't been directly interlinked. I think part of it is we had the strategic plan coming aboard, and then we knew the destination or the target was changing a little bit with World's Best Workforce. So that has not explicitly been done with the new strategic plan. And, but I do think, once we get clear, a clearer idea of what our metrics are moving forward, that would definitely make sense to do that and to be more closely aligned with what we're doing at the school improvement level.
Because the data's the same, right? It's just applied differently. And then I had a question about the credit recovery. If I heard you correctly, are we starting the winter and spring break credit recovery processes?
Yep, we are taking it in stages. We'll start with winter break here. And we have that going on, plan to go on here for this winter break. Kate Eggerman, our assistant principal over at the high school there, will oversee that program. And she'll have, be recruiting students who need that support to come in during winter break and make up those credits.
Fantastic. That's great news. And by the way, I was thrilled to see the changes in MINT CAPS and the number of free and reduced lunch, as well as other groups being able to participate in that. I also note that a few, just a few years ago, we actually started affording the busing so that kids participating in the Lakeville version of MINT CAPS didn't have to have a car and car insurance and all that kind of stuff. Two questions. One, the cost for the busing, did that come out of A&amp;I? And then number two, did you see the same correlation when the busing started with the increase in the percentage involvement of those demographic groups into MINT CAPS?
I wasn't here when it originally started with the busing. The busing started before me. And it was slated to come out of A&amp;I there. And I believe in terms of the end-of-year charges, did we charge out of A&amp;I there for MINT CAPS? I don't think we did. I think we do charge transportation out of A&amp;I, but that's more so utilized for our carrying and committed conversations there. But we do have bussings that run from the high school to there. And I know that a few of our English language learners are riding that bus to MINT CAPS.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Okay, with that, I want to appreciate the very comprehensive report, and you're willing to stake all of our questions. So thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution for the 2425 budget. And I'm gonna hand this over to Director Frederiksen.
Thank you, Chair Franz. Directors, Dr. Thomas, we've talked about this at the last study session. We have additional enrollment of about 100 students. A little over half of them are at kindergarten. So we are increasing the general fund revenue by just under $1 million and then increasing the expenses by that same amount. We're also increasing the community ed revenue and expenses for, due to the increase in the number of kids co-students attending. So as we talked about a couple of weeks ago at the study session, this is just approving that, the final document for a revised budget.
And I believe that we're also gonna be taking the 957 or close to a million out of the fund balance.
Correct. That didn't change.
Right, okay. So I need a motion and a second.
So made.
By Director Olstad.
Second.
Second by Director Crosby. And any questions?
I just have a question. I know I raised concerns about keeping the expenses at the $800,000 in our past study session. And the more I looked into this and the more I thought about it, the one thing that I noticed, and I want to get clarification if this is in your consideration, is that I've noticed for the past three years, from our October 1st forecast, or actual number of students enrolled, until the end of the year, we lose about 50 students on average for the past three years in a row. And so if we lose about 50 students per year on average for the past three years, would it be prudent to dial those expenses back to be reflective of the fact that we're gonna lose those 50 students more than likely? And on our last enrollment report, we're, and I know enrollment fluctuates, but we're already down 17 students, so...
So it's important to understand the difference between the actual enrollment that we have compared to last year and the actual enrollment that we use to calculate the expenses, which are two different numbers. So the enrollment that we projected was gonna carry over into the revenue is significantly less than what we actually have right now. We are losing students. I think there's 17, I think, a difference. So we have more students than we had last year, but significantly more than what we projected. So the revenues and expenses are based on the actual amounts compared to what our projection was last fall.
Yeah, and my concern is, is that if we're adding these expenses in, that we're gonna spend the money rather than trying to be fiscally responsible and dial back expenses based on the situation, you know, based on our levy, the levy didn't pass. And so that was just one of the things that I noticed, is that there was consistently, at the end of the year, from October 1st to the end of the year, we were losing 50 students. So just one of my observations. Thank you.
Director Frederiksen, having looked at the enrollment on average for the past about 10 years, I think we lose a percentage every year for a variety of reasons, people moving out. We also get a significant number of students in, usually at second half of the year. So, but I'm seeing an average every year of that fluctuation, just pretty consistently over general percentage. Is that a correct statement?
That is, but again, if we're looking at our enrollment projections as we built them out, we had significantly lower number. I think our enrollment projections, when we were doing our budget last fall, or last, yeah, last fall, were something like 8,500, and we're actually at 8,600. So we're adjusting our revenues and expenses to reflect our actual. And then we'll adjust the enrollment projections moving forward if this in fact holds. So they're constantly being updated, which is why we give you that report every month. As we start looking at the 2526 budget, we'll certainly take those into account. There's several different methodologies we can look at for enrollment. You can use a straight average. You can use a weighted average. So we'll continue to just keep monitoring them and make sure that it's gonna be reflective of whatever we decide for the methodology.
If I remember correctly during the study session, you had said that no matter what, there's a cost on average per student that is considered in the expenses, regardless of what we get in, because that stays pretty consistent. And of course, what we get in is gonna be varied on the formula.
Correct. We're gonna get money on the formula. And again, when we talked about at the study session last two weeks ago, as we looked at the actual expenses and where the variance were from last year, and our transportation costs have been higher than what we anticipated. We had a teacher contract that was settled that had a significant increase in the...
Longevity?
Longevity, sorry.
And the steps, yeah.
So there are expenses that we hadn't originally anticipated in the original budget that were, again, we're gonna try to save money where we can, but I think it would be, it wouldn't be prudent to include some of those expenses if we're gonna see the revenue. But we'll continue to monitor. We'll continue to look at the financial statements every month and keep you updated on where we actually are sitting.
I just want to make sure I understood the long conversation that happened at the study session that addressed these questions. So thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
You just brought something up that I'd forgotten about, Tammy, that the $700,000 overage on transportation was a bit of a mystery at the study session. Have you had a chance to figure out what's driving that?
Yep, we have. We've done some analysis. So we knew the transportation contract was gonna go up 6% according to what their contract was for just the general education transportation. Where it has increased is special education transportation and activities transportation. So while the regular transportation saw the 6% increase that we anticipated, the overall is increased by about 16%. And Director Powers and I have kind of gone through that, looking at the, kind of all the detail. They did change some of the formulas on how they were charging the transportation, specifically around the activities. They used to have a bus that they would take the kids to the activity. They'd come back, pick them up. They've changed that so that if they take them to the activities, you're being charged for the bus driver from the time they take them to the activities to the time they bring them back. They've increased if there's a U-Haul that's hauling some of the equipment, they raise that rate. So there are some things that are increased in the transportation contract that we are looking at. We have committed to the bus company that we would meet with them this spring to look at possible changes in the contract. I know they're interested in seeing how we can change some of the language in the contract. But it was in special ed and activities.
And then the 957608, do you give me an example of what that might cover? I mean, that's to balance this, coming out of the NISAN fund balance. Is this for one-time costs?
So when we originally presented this budget, we were trying to commit to, I think it was $3 million. We presented a lot of options. There were some things that the board just did not want to agree to try to cut out of the budget. So there was an agreement that we would use 957 out of fund balance. We generally will use that for one-time cost. Obviously, it's only gonna be good for one time. So we are very cautious on what the actual expenses are. It's, well, at this point, I can't really give you specifics because again, we're trying to be good stewards of our money and not overspend, but...
Okay.
It is an agreement that the board had approved.
Is it possible, because I know that was one of my concerns during our budget conversation, is it possible to provide a list when those spends do happen? That you could just provide us on a monthly basis of, here's the $100,000, here's what it was for?
It's a little difficult to do that. I mean, we can provide a list of things that we hadn't maybe anticipated coming out of the budget. But school funding works that if your revenues and your expenses have to balance out. If you spend more than your revenue, then you take it out of fund balance. There's nothing in any of the reports that we are required to show, here's the exact line items that came out. But we can certainly compare budget versus actual variance reports and see which line items we overspent and kind of deduce from that that that's where it's coming from. But again, it's, when you're looking at the whole big picture, it's hard to narrow it down to one or two things.
And I think an example I might share to maybe articulate an example for, maybe what you're getting at, you can prove me wrong here, is our need in special ed kids, right? It's gone up a lot. And so we're not fully funded. Those kids aren't fully funded. So that could be a large piece of that puzzle. Transportation's an example of that, too. So Tammy can make lists, sorry, Director Frederiksen can make lists for us. But I think logically, we can come to that conclusion as we're adding staffing for special ed, for example, as we're talking about the increase in transportation, you know?
And I would think staffing would not be included, though, because that's a reoccurring cost, not a one-time charge.
Right, but the, yes, but we're not fully funded in special education. So that has to come from somewhere. So where does it come from? The district's fund balance.
Well, yeah, no, that, I would, I hear where you're going with that. So, but no, we wouldn't take ongoing staffing resources to put to a one-time use. So essentially, the best way that we can come up with this because of the fluctuations of, as we discussed earlier, with the budget from month to month, is at end-of-year or, you know, quarterly, we can, we could assign expenditures to the one-time use totaling the 957. And that's essentially what we do when we balance the budget. We just then, there's no specific funding other than if it's a one-time use, we can code it against the 957. And so that's how we get to that. So it's more of a budget exercise than a, an expenditure list. So that's, you know, if that makes sense to you all. So when Tammy talks, or Director Frederiksen talks about rectifying the revenues against the expenses, at the back end is where we just recode and say, okay, we need expenditures totaling 957 one time. This is a one time, this is a one time, okay, here's our 957. So that's how we typically do it.
Well, I know that when I sponsor the kids to go to the cybersecurity summit, this is the first year that the bus had a extra percentage on it for traveling during rush hour, which was quite large. And was unusual and almost prevented a lot of students from being able to attend the conference. So that was kind of interesting. The other thing is, is when I line up the same vendors and the same expense, UFAR's accounting category, you can see an inflationary increase for the exact same service that's even higher than what you would expect from the CPI index. So that seems to have been occurring quite a bit in the last couple of years. Is that reflected in here? I assume it would be.
Yes, the, so an example of that is just like, we are held to some of the new legislative laws around personal time off, family and medical time off. Every other organization is also charged with that. So while bus companies, because they're for profit, if they have increased expenses, we're gonna be charged those increased expenses. So it kind of is, right down the line, you're gonna see additional expenses for anything that any of our vendors are gonna see additional expenses for.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is a, first, did I get a motion and a second? No, I didn't. I need a motion and a second for the... Director Crosby. Okay, this is a roll call vote. We'll start with Director Atkinson.
Nay.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Olstad?
Aye.
Aye, that passes 6-1. Okay, next, we have the proclamation for American Education Week. And I know some of us have already participated in that today. I am going to ask Director White to read the proclamation.
All righty here. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they'll need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, administrators, or clerical staff, bus drivers, or media specialists, child nutrition staff, or support staff work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas our district community hub bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in a, in a common enterprise, now therefore, the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board of Education does hereby proclaim November 18th through the 22nd, 2024, as the 103rd Annual Observance of American Education Week.
Thank you very much. All of us are attending schools this week to say thank you to our educators. And of course, the educators again told me today how much they enjoyed those pumpkin bars. So that was great. Next, we have the proclamation for Substitute Educator Appreciation Day, and I'm going to ask Director Bullion to read that one.
Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes November 22nd, 2024, as Substitute Educator Staff Appreciation Day. On this day, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 364 licensed substitute educators and 181 non-licensed substitute educators and four nurse substitutes. Whereas substitute educators must be flexible to teach a wide variety of subjects depending on the class they're teaching on any given day. Whereas substitute educators must adapt to different classrooms and different classes on multiple short-term periods. Whereas substitute educators are responsible for ensuring each day of instruction is productive and maintains continuity with a teacher's lessons, lesson plan. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' substitute educators for supporting the education of our students and declares November 22nd to be Substitute Educator Appreciation Day in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you. Anybody here to say anything about substitute educators?
Chair Franz, members of the board, thank you so much for the proclamation to recognize these vital individuals that help continue learning when our staff are unable to be at work. And I'm very happy to share that last year we had 310. Now we have 364 licensed substitutes. And then we went from 165 up to 181. That's a 17% and 10% increase respectfully for these very vital positions that we definitely couldn't continue our operations without. So I appreciate the commitment of all of our leaders throughout the district, our community members, and all of our staff to help us continue to make our substitutes feel welcome and appreciated as we would not be able to continue our work without them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is policy. And we start with policy, actually, we have lots of policies here. So we're going to go through these one at a time again and remembering, and recognizing to the listening public that each one of these policies were discussed at length, both at the policy committee meeting as well as in the previous study session. So starting off with 606.5.
Chair Franz, members of the, oh my God, Chair Franz, members of the board, the only change to policy 606.5 from the previous reading was in the purpose statement, adding and contribute to academic excellence to acknowledge the connection to the strategic plan. And just acknowledging that there is some continued feedback to make sure that we have library materials that promotes the love of reading, that, that also includes that in the policy as well. But that was the only changes from the previous time we reviewed the policy.
Okay, any questions?
I just have a question for Dr. Thomas, and maybe you can elaborate. With this being a new policy in place, will there be any sort of guidance given to the library media specialists on how to implement this policy and like doing any sort of audit to ensure that materials that are in our libraries are not obscene and that they reflect the age and maturity level of the students in each building? And the reason I bring this up is because we did not have a policy like this in place previously that was this specific to library materials. And we have had inappropriate items infiltrate into our schools in the past that have been removed. And so by taking a more proactive approach, I'm wondering if there'll be any sort of like audit or what type of guidance will be given to the library media specialists?
Thank you, Director Atkinson, members of the board. Yes, with any policy, particularly any new policy, it is our practice that we would ensure that our staff adhere and have the supports necessary to carry out said policy. So with our LMSs throughout the district, yes, many of them are part of the development of this. And so there would be a natural course that we would make sure that they understand and are fully executing the policy with fidelity.
And then I know we reviewed this in the study session, and I still strongly agree. I'm strongly opposed to having the library bill of rights within our policy. We're the only district that I can see of, as of at this moment, that has the library bill of rights. And let it be known, we are not a library. So we cannot and will not have all items in our, in our media specialist center, or in our media center. And then the other thing is, I believe that the library bill of rights creates a conflict of interest to our policy.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to ask the board, do you want to vote on these individually or just take them all at the end? Individually, okay. So with this policy, I need a motion in a second.
So made.
By Director Olstad. Second by anybody?
Second.
Second by Director Burnick. Okay, we've already had conversation. Is there anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that passes 5-2. All right. Now we move on to policy 701. Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the board, there are no changes to this policy from the last time it was presented.
Okay. Any, first of all, let me take a motion in a second.
So made.
By Director Crosby.
Second.
And second by Director White. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. All right. Policy 701.2, fund balance policy, Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the board, there are no changes to this policy since last presented.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
By Director White.
Second.
By Burnick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Policy 702, oh, yeah, we did, 702, accounting. Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the board, there are no changes to this policy since last time presented.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
So made.
By Director Bullion and Director Atkinson. Okay, any discussion? No, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. 702.1, electronic funds transfer, Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the board, there are no changes to this policy since last presented.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Okay, Director White?
Second.
Director Atkinson. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 7-0. And the next one is 703, the annual audit.
Chair Franz, members of the board, there has been a change under "aye" to reflect the conversation from the work session to include if a quorum of the school board directs the superintendent or doesn't he by November, that there will be an RFP that is conducted. So that language is reflected in the changes in your packet tonight.
Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
By Director White?
Second.
Second by Crosby. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passed, well, opposed? That passes 7-0. All right. Policy 704, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and fixed asset accounting.
Chair Franz, members of the board, I apologize, my computer's not working again. I do not believe there are any other changes to this policy since last presented.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
So made.
And a second?
Second.
By Director Burnick. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Policy 705, investments?
Chair Franz, members of the board, there are no changes to the policy since last presented.
Okay, and just to expedite this, on 706, 710, 720, and 721, were there any changes?
Chair Franz, members of the board, no, the rest of the remaining policies are all presented the same as they were presented last time to the school board.
Is the board okay with us taking all those at once?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so I need a motion in a second for policy 705, 706, 710, 720, and 721.
So moved.
Okay, by Director White.
Second.
Second, Director Burnick. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. And next, our administrative reports. I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Thomas for his superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Franz, board directors. As we have been discussing tonight, we are going into that budgeting process. And as a, I just want to say thank you to our community for coming out to express your vote at the polls. And as we all have learned by now, our community is not moving forward with their support of an operating levy. And again, just a big thank you to everyone who participated in that democratic process. And with that said, we are going to have to engage in some budget reductions and cost containment. And that is a process that as a leadership team, we have begun initiating those conversations internally with various staff groups. And we'll complete some of that initial canvassing with our staff at the end of this week, bringing more of that conversation to you all next Monday. But just generally speaking, we are looking in the four to five million dollar range as our budget targets for reductions and containments, and more to come as we go through this budget iteration. And just letting our staff and our community know, we will find ways to ensure that we are inviting perspectives to that conversation to minimize the impact as much as we possibly can. I've sent out messages to our staff to ensure that we are focusing on our ability to be respectful, unified in what's best for our students, upholding integrity of all folks involved, because people will be impacted. Even though we're talking about programs and positions, et cetera, people are behind a lot of this. It makes up 80% of our budget. So just keep that in mind. But tough decisions, and we will, we will work through those very, as best we can. I also want to just share that we are coming into kindergarten enrollment. We talked about our enrollment coming up here this year, and we want to continue that trend. And so about mid-December, we'll start taking on the class of 2038, if you can think about that. And yeah, I think we will have various principal, or various nights for information. So there will be, December 2nd, there will be, principals will be hosting kindergarten enrollment information at 6:00 PM at Glendale. We will also have a Spanish immersion parent panel, December 5th at 6:30 PM at Laola. And we will keep that open all throughout the year, but we like to look at a December 12th kind of cut point for us to start looking and tracking and monitoring and just letting our community know, and particularly our class of 2038, there may be some fun prizes throughout this process as well. So stay tuned. We've talked a lot about MNCAPs. It's a vastly popular program in our district. I've sent out various Fridays Fives because a lot of their success is predicated on the involvement of our community. And our business students are conducting research surveys, and they need volunteers to help participate. So if anyone from our community is interested, please make sure you go to our MNCAPs website, and you can find information on how you can partake, partake in some of the student-based surveys that they're, that they're leading. And then lastly, we have our fall musical coming up, and they are Prior Lake High School. Students will be presenting Little Shop of Horrors. I'm thrilled to see this event, date night for my wife and I this Thursday. And, but November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd at 7:00 PM at the high school. And then November 24th, we'll have an afternoon 2:00 PM matinee. So make sure you go to our website and get the tickets. It is a ticketed event, even though it's a, a big auditorium, they sell out every year. So if you want to go see some great off-Broadway, come on out to the high school and enjoy yourselves. And actually, I turn to Dan Powers quickly first before we turn it over to the team here for an administrative announcement.
Superintendent Thomas, members of the board, Madam Chair, we, we'll be starting groundbreaking on something that Jim Del Wu started before he passed away. It's in cooperation with a bunch of our playgroups, our booster groups, and it's going to be the construction of a lacrosse wall at Twin Oaks. So you're going to see a big thing a blank, looking nothing. It's going to be about 12 feet high and 30 feet wide. It's totally funded by our, our boosters, the playgroup, and the girls' high school booster club for their lacrosse teams. This is something that they have been working towards for quite a long time. And like I mentioned, Jim and Maureen started this process before I even got here. So I'm very excited to take a little bit of the good job things on all this as we get it done. But some in the community will probably say, oh, why are we spending money on something? And we aren't. This is something that's being provided to us by our boosters. And they are greatly looking forward to it because that program has grown every year for many, many years. And I think it's an exciting thing to add to, to our property. So if there's any questions about that, I can definitely answer those. The total cost, just so you are aware, that they are covering is about $42,000. So this is a, it's a pretty expensive chunk, and I'm really glad that I didn't have to pay for it.
What is the lacrosse wall?
So typically, when they're practicing for lacrosse, they've got their nets on the stick, and they're throwing it up against my buildings. And this won't be throwing it up against the buildings, it'll be throwing it up against a wall. It'll be in the field in between where the older goalposts are on the west side. There's a service road that goes right there, and then we've got our softball, excuse me, the, yeah, the other fields to the south. We've got softball, baseball, and then the soccer fields. So there's a little service road, so it's going to be about 10 feet off of that, right in line with the goalpost that's down at the end.
And it's permanent?
It's a permanent structure, yeah. It's two, so it's made out of concrete. So 12 feet wide by, or 12 feet high by 30 feet wide, and it's about a foot thick. So this thing is really big, it's going to be reinforced concrete. And to do that, to make that structure, we actually have to put in a footing that's going to be about four feet wide. So it's, this is, it's going to take, they're going to move a chunk of dirt for a while. So it's, this is, it's going to take, they're going to move a chunk of dirt for a while, and then, then we're going to get it to look a lot better again, once it's all done next spring. But yeah, it's still going to be exciting. But it's going to be one of the things we talked about, and I can smile, because I know what's going to happen, and I talked with the boosters about this. It will be graffiti. It's just a matter of time. But they were going, planning on helping us to make sure that we can maintain that at that level. And one of the things we did talk with them about is putting, there's a specific type of paint that works really well with keeping graffiti off, and when it's on there, it can be cleaned up easier. So I'm really looking forward to that, too. They're planning on buying us an extra five gallons of paint when it's done, to make sure that we can keep that up. And, you know, the district, our actual costs for that are going to be extremely minimal. It's going to be occasionally worrying about that graffiti. Other than that, it's not on us, it's them helping us maintain it, so I'm excited about that.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Cool. Okay, other administrative reports.
I don't want to follow that. But as Dr. Thomas said, as we're approaching the staffing and budget season, we know that we're going to be making some collective hard decisions. And I just want to acknowledge that there's some questions over the past few months that we have been answering, addressing around some different staffing reports that are out there. And so I just wanted to refresh for the board and community some key points that were addressed in the August board meeting that Director Fredrickson read on my behalf. But it's vital to just ensure that when we're analyzing data, that we're making sure that we're comparing apples to apples, and knowing and that there's a, acknowledging that there's a different reality that we're in right now, that's different than nine to ten years ago. So for example, in August, we addressed a report that was circling around that talked about twenty-three admin hires in the last year, but the, really, the crux of the, the matter lied in the differing definitions of administration. The document created categorized roles such as early childhood family education assistance, early childhood screeners, cultural liaisons, kids co-assistance, noon supervisors, deans, and other roles under admin. Whereas HR and other governmental reports do not classify those as admin roles. This can be, the same thing could be said for a report that's circling that is referencing for MDE STAR data. For example, under that report, it has administrative assistants listed under administrative staff, whereas when we refer to administrators in our district, we don't count administrative assistants. Furthermore, in that report, it doesn't count all administrative assistants in those categories. For in the 2022 school year, it lists eleven administrative assistants, where we definitely have more than eleven administrative assistants in that year. Or the report states from 2013, 2019, that we had zero directors, which is not how we classify directors. For example, in 2019, we had nine directors at that time. So just acknowledging that different reports, especially at the state and federal level, every single year, they change their definitions and their categories. So when looking at these trend datas, we really have to lean into additional questions around it. And as Dr. Thomas always says, that data is not judgmental, but just helps us ask more questions. So just reminding ourselves, when we're looking at these different trend datas, that we have to dig in a little bit deeper. So when looking at these hard conversations that we're going to have to have, like, looking at, there's new schools that we've had, programs that have moved from Lakeville to Prior Lake, for example, or increased our new state and federal mandates, staffing landscape changes, and most importantly, significant different student needs. So as I mentioned in the August 2024 meeting, we have currently in place control, internal controls when adding staff. Whenever a hiring manager requests an additional position, HR reviews to see if the FTE is available in the current budget. If it is not, then we bring it forward to the board with the supporting data and additional staffing MOU for the board to either approve or deny that request. And as we've mentioned in August and other meetings, we are continuing to focus on trying to get to a true position control system. We have transitioned to the new Skyward and working very hard to work through all the kinks of that transition, and hope that next year, we can utilize the position control model, module to its full extent. So we have better advanced reporting capabilities to provide cyclical reports and comparing our approved budget FTE to our filled FTE, because we recognize the value of that information and how critical it would be, so just reaffirming our commitment to moving forward in that direction.
Director Herman, I have a question. So if an administrative assistant is not classified as administrative, what are they classified as then?
Director Atkinson, members of the board, in the district, we refer to administrators as everyone Assistant Director and above. For administrative assistants, we refer to them as school support staff. So again, it's just always different definitions, depending on who you're asking for the report, whether it's the state, the federal government, the district. And just knowing that those classifications and titles and categories can change over time. So for example, our administrative assistance bargaining unit used to be referred to as the secretary's bargaining unit. So when you pull that data and a baseline data, it looks like all of a sudden, in one year, we went from having zero administrative assistants to a bunch. But you have to look at then the category of secretary bargaining unit and realize and know in a data comparison that they were the same bargaining unit. So that's just the increases, the, I can't say words today. The struggles of looking at comparable data over trend. So just wanted to, to remind the board and the community that we have to look a little bit deeper in all that. And again, acknowledge that our reality from ten years ago is not our current reality. So as we look at all these different information and data, just digging a little bit deeper.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Other administrative reports.
Along the same lines, with the budget coming up, I'm still hearing some confusion around our funds. We have the general fund, we have what we call Fund Two and Fund Four. Fund Two is our food services fund, can only be used for food services. There is statutory requirements that tell you how you can spend those dollars. We cannot use them for operating out of the general fund. It must be used for food services. Same with our community education fund four, those are for community education programs only. We cannot use them for general operating fund. And then also, it's important to know, I know we've, we've talked about this, when we talk about our Fund One General Operating Fund, almost half, a little under half of the revenue that we get in our general fund is categorical dollars. And what I mean by categorical is by statute, there is requirements that you have to use these dollars for specific purposes. You can't use them for anything else than what the statutory requirements are. And those include things like our achievement and integration money, the compensatory education dollars, the American Indian education aid dollars, our special education dollars, Q comp, the long-term facilities maintenance, capital dollars, professional development, the REDAC dollars, English learner dollars, gifted and talented. We have area learning center dollars that can only be used for our area learning center. We have career and tech ed, we have safe schools, and those are just some of them. But it's important to understand that we're, when we talk about the buckets of money, they're very specific, and it's all compliance-driven around statutes. So as we move forward with planning the budget, you'll hear a lot of talk about the different buckets. And we do have to pay quite a bit of attention to what those buckets are used for. Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, we're going to move on to board reports, and at this time, I'm going to ask Ann to do her report first.
Thank you, Director Franz, we have a lot of fun stuff coming up at the high school. A lot of winter sports are starting soon. A lot of our community service groups are getting really busy around this time of year as we approach the holiday season. And as Dr. Director Oak mentioned before, we have a caring committed conversation actually hosted tomorrow by the Native American Student Coalition. So I'm excited for that. And then along with that, there's a new project that the president of our Asian Student Association is working on. It's a mural project that we're collaborating with the Prior Lake Rotary with. And we're going to make a mural that kind of represents what we think Prior Lake is and what the students want to see. It's kind of a legacy that our class wants to leave behind. And this Wednesday, actually, we're meeting with a muralist to start designing and kind of talking about what the mural is actually going to look like. It's going to go in our media center on this like big wall that we have. So I'm excited for that. And as Dr. Thomas mentioned, we do have the Little Shop of Horrors this weekend, so I'll see you there, hopefully. Regarding student council, our executive board just got back from our Craigins Retreat in Brainerd. We went up there for a couple days, and we just spent some time talking about leadership. We collaborated with other student councils. We listened to some keynote speakers, and we got a lot of input in that. We also have another retreat coming up this Friday with all of our student council. We go to the St. Michael's Coffee House, and we start planning for our winter week, which is coming up in February. We have a lot of time, but that one we're, because we really want to increase student involvement. It's kind of hard to get a lot of student, like, spirit and participation around that time of year, where it's post-holiday season, everyone doesn't really know what to do. Just some more highlights. We have our No Shave November fundraiser that I mentioned at the last meeting, where male teachers refrain from shaving their faces, and then they raise money for a men's charity of their choice. We've raised almost two thousand dollars so far, and we're aiming for at least four thousand this year. So yeah, and then our fundraising committee is working on basketball game concessions. Sunshine Committee just made our custodians a gift basket, and they're continuing to work on birthdays every week. And we have a few community service projects coming up, and our development committee is also working on the staff wall. So yeah, that's all I have for, at this school, and if I don't see you guys later, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, there's a lot going on. Okay, starting with board reports, would you start with Director Olsted?
Sure, I have a lot, I'll try to talk fast. I, too, bought my tickets for Little Shop, very excited, taking the family Friday. We're going to be like this, because I waited too late to get tickets, and so we got the first row, which will be exciting. MS HSL, they voted in favor of adding ninth grade under the umbrella to the governance. So this allows ninth graders to compete, develop, and as I mentioned last time, too, they're covered under the catastrophic insurance now. So this was a big, a big vote. They needed sixty-seven percent to say yes to pass, which they obviously got it passed, so. Wanted to give our community that update. Our Equity Advisory Committee, we had a coffee and conversation last week around housing instability and homelessness. It was very well attended, it was very powerful. Really appreciate everybody coming out for that, there's going to be another one, we're planning for January. And we also, our subcommittee in the committee, we have a newsletter committee, and staff received that just today, actually. It looks really great, so we have other ideas about how to take that idea and broaden it, but it's still in the works, so we're excited to report back. Southwest Metro, I actually have a board meeting tomorrow night, so this was from last night. But we're doing, they presented their annual update for World's Best Workforce slash cracker, cacker, whatever we're calling it. And the finance committee met, and they're, we're looking at the administrative guidelines for wages, benefits, and work conditions. So we're working that through the finance committee. And Southwest Metro was really excited, because they identified candidates for all of their international teaching positions, which was something that hadn't happened before. So that was a really great update, and they're really excited about that. Delegate Assembly is coming up, this is my year two, if anybody's interested in nighttime reading. I have a huge delegate assembly guidebook to review, that's December 6th and 7th in Bloomington. There's twenty-eight resolutions that are being brought forward. They range from funding for milk, if kids bring their lunch from, from home, if they can get a milk. Cybersecurity comprehensive plan, mascot funding, decline in enrollment funding. So there's a lot of resolutions that we all have a really good eye into, so I look forward to that. And finally, teaching and learning, I don't want to, there's two of us on teaching and learning, so I don't want to go through all of them, because I'm sure you're going to talk about it, too, Director Atkinson. We reviewed the library policy last time, this is a couple of weeks ago now. We talked about some new course offerings. And we, we did talk about, it's coding, too, for the middle school, it's fashion design, Dakota language, AP chemistry. And we did talk about the possibility, the levy hadn't happened yet, the levy vote, I should say, it was the day before. And so hopefully, those can continue on, it may, may not, but that was discussed. So a lot of good stuff. A lot happened in the last month, so, thank you.
Director Crosby, Director Burnick?
Yeah, I had a few things that I wanted to share. One, tomorrow night at Twin Oaks, Chris Heron will be coming to speak. He is speaking on behalf of Choose Not to Use, which is through the Scott County Drug Prevention. It is, it is free to the district. Chris, I went to Chris Heron's story, his speaking last year in Jordan, and I highly recommend it. His, his story is actually in our curriculum at the high school. Last year when I went, my son was like, oh, we just learned about Chris Heron. So I thought that was really cool. So that is tomorrow night at Twin Oaks Middle School, from seven o'clock to eight thirty, and so share it and attend if you can. Early Learning Advisory Council was there last week, and there's a shout-out for families to be part of the Early Learning Advisory Council. Upcoming dates for that? Oh, I had it here. Okay, our next meeting will be December nineteenth. You can find information on the district website as well, but they're looking for families to be involved with that. Dr. Thomas and Chair Franz and I had an opportunity to attend, oh, what was it called? The Student School Board Development Event that MSBA put on. And listening to student representatives, board representatives, it was really enlightening. It had all of our wheels turning for things to discuss. Well-put-on event, and I'm sure Chair Franz will have more to say on that, but.
That was all I had.
Director White? Director Atkinson?
Yeah, just to add on to Director Olsted's from the Teaching and Learning Committee, did a great job recapping in that. In addition, we also talked about, sorry, I'm grabbing my notes here. We'll be getting some calendar proposals coming to the board here, to be voted on, I believe, in December. And then we had a very quick overview of the six oh six point five policy as well. And then I just want to let my fellow board members know that this Thursday, we have a Community Education Services Committee meeting at noon, and I will not be able to attend, so if anyone is, would like to attend the meeting, it's at noon at the Community Education Service Center, and it's also can be attended virtually, so if anybody wants to, I can forward the information on to you, so just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so yes, first of all, the AMSD meeting. In the Association for Metropolitan School Districts, we talked about different districts, and how they were tackling the, the, their definition of a profile of a student. It was very enlightening, and the different perspectives of the different districts, and I think what stood out to me is every single one of them mentioned critical thinking, and some level of strategic ability to think and project. Many of the, the topics were the same, some of them had more detail, and it was very impressive, and it certainly gives us enough to think about as we go into our own adventures in that area. And then I did attend with Director Bullion and Dr. Thomas, the, the Student Board Representative Meeting at Shakopee. And I believe your second-in-command was there in your place, and it was very enlightening, the way the different school districts actually worked with their student reps, how their student reps were chosen. The ideas from the students were varied, and all contained one thing, is that the students wanted more voice. And how they actually achieved that in their districts, and what their goals were to make that voice more heard, particularly when it comes to the school board. So this was a, a meeting, I think it was the second one they've had, where the idea was for board directors to receive feedback from students, particularly the student reps. And again, I, I hope that a lot of ideas came back to you, and I'd be more than happy to sit down and also talk to you about our learning and what we learned, not only from your second-in-command about how things work. And, and what I was really surprised with was how mature our own student council was compared to what was how mature our own student council was compared to what we heard from other districts who are either just starting this process, or still kind of trying to figure it out. It was actually very impressive, we walked away feeling very good about our student council and about their maturity and their really organized way of, of handling the student council, the representation of all students, and how they brought that up to the board. So again, I, I think I speak for these guys, that we walked away very impressed with our school district and with our student council, so thank you. As far as other items, I just, I think that's it for me, actually, so I'll go into future events, if that's okay? Oh, that's right, so on December ninth, we are going to have a celebration of our outgoing board members, Julie Burnick, Amy Crosby, and Enrique Valesquez, and that will be at five PM prior to our December ninth school board meeting, and it will be held here at the District Services Center, so I hope you come and, and celebrate, and also thank the service of our board members. Then also, we have a board study session on November twenty-fifth, of course, we've got no school, starting November twenty-seventh through Friday, November twenty-ninth to celebrate Thanksgiving, and then also, four new board members coming on board, as well as existing board members. On the first week of December, you will start to receive information about potential committees that you may be interested in, and instructions on how to give that feedback, and the deadline to be able to put your name onto committees for the next school, for the next fiscal year, actually, school year, January to Ja- December, okay? That's it, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn and a second.
So made.
By Director Bullion?
Second.
Second by Director White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, that passes seven zero, we are adjourned.